Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting of May 27, 2014. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Here.
Mayor Buehmann.
Here. I want to thank the garden club for the flowers they always provide. And, uh, let's see, Mark Zaffrono, lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mic is off. Turn your mic on. Jim, so, no, his is on.
We have a couple of announcements this evening. First of all, the annual Posey Parade will take place this Sunday, June 1st, 2014, at 1:00 PM. Starts in San Mateo Avenue, winds its way across Al Camino, and ends at the park in Crystal Springs Road. And it should be a lot of fun, as long as the wind stays down and the sun shines. We're looking forward to it. Uh, the city of San Bruno reminds residents of the need to reduce water consumption or ought to protect water resources in light of the continuing statewide drought conditions. And the city council has scheduled a study session beginning at 6:00 PM on June 9th, 11th, and 12th to review the proposed 2014-15 budgets. Also, there will be a pancake breakfast put on by our firefighters and first responders this Sunday at the main fire station in El Camino Real. I believe it's from 9 till noon.
Correct.
And, uh, this Thursday evening, at the Veterans Hall on San Mateo Avenue, we're going to have a study session talking about ordinance 1284, height limits in our transit corridors plan. So hopefully you can attend. Item four, presentations, this one is very special. We're going to present the 2014 Liberty Mutual, actual, 2013 Liberty Mutual Firemark Award to Fire Department Captain Scott Waldvogel, sorry Scott, recognizing his work to develop the Community Emergency Response Team CERT program. Scott is a 16-year veteran of the San Bruno Fire Department who currently holds the rank of Fire Captain. And he has worked for numerous charitable community organizations, and after the 2010 pipeline explosion, was instrumental in developing a Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT program, within the city of San Bruno. Scott was among 150 public safety employees nationwide nominated for their charitable work within their communities. Ten finalists were considered for two national awards in 2014. Scott has received the 2014 Liberty Mutual Firemark Award for community service and public education. Liberty Mutual representative, Melinda Hartman, was at the fire station 51 on Monday, May 19th, to present Scott and the fire department a $10,000 check to be used for all community preparedness programs. Scott earned his nationally recognized award for his, uh, work with CERT, muscular dystrophy in the Alicia and Rich Byrne Foundation. We would like to congratulate Scott this evening and the fire department on receiving this prestigious award. Congratulations. And I'd like to... Re-present this to Scott. This is the award. You can get it on cable TV.
Um, this is, you know, very humbling award to, first, to be nominated and to receive, um, you know, like I said in that little embarrassing video, I don't do anything to get recognized. I do something because it feels right. And, uh, giving back to this, uh, community, which, again, has given so much to me since growing up here. Um, but I'd like to thank the, you know, city council, city manager, uh, the fire department, and community preparedness for kind of pushing CERT along. I think it was a, um, long overdue program. And it's funny, earlier in that year, I heard somebody from Redwood City talking about it. I had no idea where it was. But, uh, the perception that we've, uh, had from it has been positive so far. We've put roughly 125 to 130 people through it so far. And hopefully, uh, with this money, we can get out some, um, better information, better publicity in regards to the CERT program and, um, keep this program running. And actually, I'm in the middle of teaching a class right now, so...
(laughing).
I need to get back. But thank you so much.
Thank you again. And, uh, you can look for Scott in some nationally televised, uh, informational pieces by Liberty Mutual, so that'll be a lot of fun.
I was just informed of that on the 19th, that that was going nationwide and commercial. I don't know when, but...
Well, we'll find out and put him on cable, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
(applause).
A review of the agenda, um, this evening. Any errors, changes, submissions? Okay. Approval of the minutes, special city council meeting of April 22nd and May 13th, 2014, and the regular city council meeting of May 13th, 2014. Any errors, corrections, submissions there? Seeing none, they'll be approved as submitted. Uh, item number seven is our consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff. Any action on the consent calendar?
I'd like to pull 7B, please.
7B, okay. Anything else?
If there be nothing else, go ahead and move to approve the rest of the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the remainder of the consent calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item B, waive the second reading and adopt ordinances for A, ordinance imposing a 3.93% rate increase for Recology San Bruno Garbage and Recycling Services to be effective July 1st, 2014, and B, ordinance imposing a 2.24% rate increase for Recology San Bruno as a final rate step related to organics program to be effective January 1st, 2015. Irene?
Thank you. I really pulled it not so much because of the rate increases, but I've been talking to quite a few people because of the rate increases. And one of the things that has come up is their lack of knowledge about how the organics program really works. And they get confused about it. They have a little confusion and a hard time figuring out which goes where. And so some of that part is what is stopping them from doing the pro, doing what they could be doing. The other piece is the recycling part, too. So there's, there, I think there's a ripe audience out there for more education or re-education of what we need to do, what they need to do. So if Recology, I guess their representative out there, she heard me, and I'm sure it'll go on from there. So, um, I think it's an exciting opportunity, and I know you'll do that. So with that, unless someone else has something?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, if we could just very briefly respond. First of all, the council members' comments are well taken. Sometimes something new and something that we think we've talked about a lot really isn't quite enough. We appreciate the heads up that there are still people in the community who are interested in knowing more. We're informed by Recology that information will be going out soon in their periodic newsletter from the company that, uh, is mailed to all of their customers. And we will look at other ways that, through the city, we can support and assist that educational effort. And then I would like to ask, since this item has been pulled from the agenda, I just asked Mr. O'Leary to make a quick comment to correct one error that was in the staff report, and secondly, to give you a heads up about an upcoming, um, status report on the organics program.
I would just point out, on page three of the staff report, there is an incorrect date that I would like to correct. And, uh, this is the chart at the top of page three that shows the existing rate and the two, uh, rate adjustments with impacting, uh, the various can sizes. This chart shows, the middle chart, shows a change January, January 1st of 14, uh, but in fact, it meant to read that it was July 1st of 14. So the, um, there's two ordinances, one for a rate increase, uh, July 1st, and one is for a rate increase on January 1st of 15. Um, so I wanted to correct that. I, I looked at the ordinances, I looked elsewhere in the staff report, I couldn't find continuation of that error anyplace else. So that's the only, that's the only spot I could find that. On, on the second item that the city manager, uh, mentioned to you, um, the, your staff has, has, um, looked a bit into a presentation that was promised, uh, to the council on several occasions, and that was an update, uh, by Recology on the organics program. And, um, it would just be our recommendation, the Recology is, is extremely interested in, uh, meeting their promise to the council and making a, a presentation next month. Um, I don't think we would express a concern, but I, I think we would express that, um, the introduction of the program is so new in 2014 that it would be my belief, our belief, that, um, information would be presented that is so preliminary and so initial, uh, that it would really be misleading both to the council and the, and the public as far as the success of the program and the impact of the program. And it would be our recommendation that, in fact, that, um, that update be delayed for six months so that real, what, what we would view as real, usable, helpful information could be presented to you, uh, after the program has been in place for a year. Um, and, um, so really, that, that would be our recommendation. The, I think the company's ready to go forward if, if, um, if it's the wish of the council, but it'd be our recommendation, uh, to delay that for a period of time so that more complete and meaningful data could be presented.
All right. Thank you. I think that's a good recommendation, uh, since I know Irene, uh, mentioned there's a little confusion out there about how everything works, so I think it's good to get it out there. Mr. Rico?
Can I comment on...
Sure.
Robert Rico, 7th Avenue. I, I think that hopefully Recology should be able to report something positive, maybe not as big of a picture positive necessarily, but with Recology coming in, when this was all being presented, they said, "We're, we want to come back to you in six months because we have something that we feel is important for you to know." Now to say, "Well, we're going to hold off for another six months," I think it just gives the, the residents more concern that program's not working right, or that there's problems or something. Uh, I would hope that you would work with Recology and see if they can't give some sort of a report and make it real positive and say, "We're going to give you more, not another six months," versus postpone it for six months. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to be fair and to respond to, um, Mr. Rackle's, um, uh...
Comment?
Comment, your, your appropriate comment. Um, the, it was staff's initiative to suggest that a little bit more time, given that we have not even, at this moment, been, uh, engaged in the program for a period of six months. It does take a little bit of time for public information to sink in and for, um, results to actually be achieved and then, um, compiled and reported. So we can certainly look at doing something sooner than a year, and perhaps the six-month data would be a useful foundation. We just didn't want to cut ourselves and Recology and the public short by doing it too quickly. So we will, we can certainly take that into consideration.
Do the chair, Rico. I appreciate, uh, staff's recommendation, but, um, I think something needs to come forward in the six months. I think that's the commitment we gave. That's what we've told people, and that's what we need to, actions speak louder than words. And so, to me, um, even if it can't be as detailed as one would like, because, again, I do understand about the length of the data, and you want to have good data in, uh, but I believe very strongly that, uh, that's what we've told people. That's the anticipation they have, and we, we need to deliver. Thank you.
I'd also like just to mention that we just discussed, uh, Irene just said that they need more information. I think it needs to stay in the forefront. I voted for this program because I know it will be successful. It may not be as success, obviously, it's not going to be as successful as we anticipated in the first six months. But it gives, it gives us, and it gives Recology, a chance to reinforce, you know, the benefits of the program, too. If we wait and Recology just disappears for, you know, for another six months or another, you know, a year, then it's going to appear, the perception is that Recology's just coming again for another rate increase or something, or another, instead of doing what I believe, what they've always done, you know, in the past, is, is really engage the community and educate the community. And I think it's, uh, worthwhile that they, you know, report on the, this, the success. There is a success, that the, it's, it's been implemented. And to me, that's a success. And I'm, I'm, I'm sold, so, we should do it.
Do the chair. So, I, I understand what you're both saying, and I understand, I understand every son's saying. So, why don't we do this? Why don't we have staff look at, ask Recology, what would be some meaningful time period, like three months is, let me, let me rephrase that. If now, after six months that we've been doing this, what figures do they actually have? Do they have three months worth of figures, or do they have six months worth of figures? Or what's some meaningful figures, instead of, yes, the program is doing this, and yes, we, we have a 1% success rate, or we haven't, or something like that? So maybe what we should do is suggest to staff, they get together with Recology and figure out what's some meaningful sooner than a year, but maybe not next month. Maybe five months, or, I'm sorry, another two months, or whatever. I, I, I think it's, it would be important to tell people that it's successful, but on the other hand, if people think it's so successful, they don't have to do anything, I think that's the wrong message, too. So maybe there's a compromise between, between it all.
Kirsten, could I ask you a question? So you have organics developed in other communities. What's a reasonable time to actually see how it's working?
Um, I've been collecting data since the start of the program. There are numbers...
Here.
Yes.
Right.
There are numbers in place. Um, other Recology communities in our surrounding areas have been doing it for three to five years. About three, three, three and a half, four years. So, um, the longer we go, the, the, stronger the numbers become, the more outreach we can, we can develop. Um, in speaking to, um, Councilwoman O'Connell's comment about the outreach, um, we're very aware, we too are talking to the residents and the community every time we're out there. And every day I come across someone who doesn't know what to do, and I verbally, we kind of educate while we're standing there. So, we are dedicating a very large portion of our annual brochure to composting. Um, we've actually just developed a, a card for our organics drivers. They're carrying these in their route books right now. As they're approached, seeing customers out on the route, and they're confused, they're giving them this card. It has the visual that we've been giving everyone on how to participate, has our phone number. They're encouraging the residents to call and talk to our customer service reps. So, we are very open. If any resident out there has a, has a suggestion on how we can engage the community, we are all ears. We're trying to talk to our drivers and talk to the residents. How do you hear about things? And we had an organics 101 here at the senior center, trying to engage that community. We're working with Bel Air to do a presentation immediately after school with the parents. So we're constantly trying to figure out how to get all the community to participate in this program. Like I said, that, if we wait a little longer for, to present back to council, the numbers just get stronger. So, um, I did work with, with Mr. O'Leary to determine what was a good timeframe. There's no perfect timeframe. I can go nine months, I can go a year, I can go a year and a half. The numbers will just keep growing. So, um, to answer your question, we're ready to, to, to present at the six-month mark. Um, if, if, it's the council's wish to wait a full year of a nice, mature program, we'll have more community outreach out there, and it will become that much stronger. I, I can tell you with the preliminary numbers, it's, it's working. The numbers are growing, participation's growing, and the tonnage is growing. So, there's no magic number. Honestly, there's no magic number to say. It needs to be in place for 18 months. It's all different in every community, so...
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, through the chair.
Yeah.
I, I could care less about the figures, really.
Okay.
And, like I said, I mean, it's, it's, it's going, the, the figures are gonna, are gonna get better as time goes on. But I, I like what you're saying as far as how you're, you know, you're actively engaging the community. Can I ask, uh, any proposal to get into the schools? Children are just, you know, students, you know, absorb this information, they go home and they, you know, and they set it straight with their parents lots of times, you know, so if, if that's something that's, uh, we're thinking about, that would be, that would, that would get Recology, get the program, uh, a, a lot more, you know, visibility in the community also. So I'm, I'm confident that Recology is going to, you know, is going to promote the program, you know, as time goes on, you know, until it becomes like second nature to, you know, recycling and things, you know? And really can wait for the figures.
Do the chair.
Um, to answer, can I answer the question?
Sure.
Um, we do, uh, we have organics program in three of our schools. We have it in Bel Air, Rollingwood, and John Meere, who are all participating beautifully. Um, and Felicia, our waste zero specialist, and my goal is to outreach each and every one of those schools, especially the ones that aren't participating yet. So when the new school, we, we've stopped now because school's going to end, but when school, the school year starts up again, we will, um, our plan is to engage the rest of the schools onto the program.
Do the chair. This, this suggestion about the timeline is not part of this item. It's on the consent, correct? Okay, thank you. So, uh, my last two sentences, if, uh, we just heard that there's data, I don't know why, I think numbers do matter. Um, certainly when we give rate increases, they know what those numbers are. Um, I think numbers are important. It can give us a sampling and a gauge now, and then as we continue to promote and show the efforts, and then six months later you come back and let's say, "Look at what we have done as a community." If we have it, I don't know why we need to wait on it. And it doesn't have to be as detailed, but if it's there and we've said we're going to do it, let's do it.
Got the message?
I did.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, any, uh, action on B?
Move to approve 7B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mark, did you have something?
I was going to recommend, since it was pulled from the consent calendar, just to make a separate motion on each ordinance.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
BA.
BA. 7BA.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second to approve item, uh, 7BA. On the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I move to approve 7BB.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve item 7BB?
Yeah.
On the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Public hearings, number eight. There are no public hearings this evening. Under, number nine, public comment on items not on this agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council under public comment? All right, go right into conduct of business. Item 10, 10A, appoint citizens to fill vacancies on commissions, boards, and committees. Uh, we're open for nominations. We need one, um, we have one vacancy on bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee. Someone like to nominate?
Do the chair.
Michael.
I would like to nominate Mr. Matthew Jones.
Second.
Okay, motion and second to Mr. Matthew Jones. Uh, any other nominations?
No.
Okay. Motion and second for Matthew Jones on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have, uh, this evening, two vacancies on the crime prevention committee. Nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mary, uh-oh, Sanaha, Shan...
Mary Mahan.
Shan, thank you. Mahon?
Second.
Okay, motion and second for Mary Mahon. Uh, anyone else?
Through the chair.
Michael.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Alexander Melindres.
Uh, okay. Is there a second for Alexander? All right, no second. Anyone else?
Through the chair.
Rico.
I'd like to recommend Marie Cale, please.
Marie Cale?
Second.
Motion and second for Marie Cale. Anyone else? Okay, we have, uh, Mary Mahan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, we have Marie, uh, Marie Cale, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. We have two at, uh, crime prevention. We have one more vacancy on, uh, community preparedness. Nominations?
Do the chair. Nominate Mond Magia.
Second.
Motion and second for Mond. Uh, any other nominations? Okay. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. I think we're almost full. That's good. Uh, item 10B, yeah, I do want to thank everybody for participating. Thank you, Rico, for reminding me. Uh, as I said before, the, the lifeblood of this community is the volunteers, and people don't realize how many we have on our, on our crime prevention committees, not just crime prevention, but the citizens committees, boards, and commissions. So, thank everyone, and, uh, just because you weren't nominated this evening, please leave your name in the hat, because we'll have other vacancies coming up shortly. So thank, thank everyone again. Pardon? Yes, and you can attend all the meetings of the commissions, boards, and committees that you may be interested in. Item 10B, receive a report on education and enforcement activities for the 2014 fireworks season.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. Uh, you have in front of you your report that outlines the education and enforcement activities for the 2014 fireworks season. Um, I will be going over the education component, and Commander Jeff Caldwell will be going over the enforcement, uh, activities. The fire department has been busy distributing, uh, public education flyers and fireworks warning, uh, posters to the schools and large complexes throughout the city. Included, uh, in this is a short excerpt on the effects of fireworks and, uh, our, uh, the fire danger related to the drought. Um, if you've been following the news lately, Cal Fire has already been busy on fires in Southern and Central California. Uh, we've had three, um, uh, actually, the, they have reported that the moisture content is more related to August, September weather patterns as, and in May and June so far. So, we're, it looks like we're in for a very high fire season this year. Um, already, San Mateo County has been on alert to respond to strike teams three times, although we haven't been called out. So it just puts an extra precaution on things that we probably need to tell residents through this fire, uh, season, and also, uh, as we approach 4th of July and the fireworks season. Um, what we encourage people to do is to assess their homes and look for any kind of combustibles that are around the homes, related, also, uh, high grasses and anything, uh, flash fuels that could start a fire. Also, um, we, we, uh, in the last few years, uh, the fireworks-related, um, events that have occurred in San Bruno have mostly been, um, related to disposal of fireworks. We've had a lot of dumpster fires and outside fires, because people just don't know how to dispose of, you know, even the safe and sane fireworks, which is to immerse them in water, make sure they're in a non-combustible container. A lot of people tend to throw them back into the cardboard boxes that they, that they got them in, put them next to their house, and sometimes that starts outside fires. So, we encourage people to dispose of them, immerse them in water, and take those extra precautions. Uh, we're also, uh, there's a lot of public service announcements going out through the cable channel, what's happening around town, and through media sources such as Focus. Uh, June 4th is our safety meeting with all the organizations requesting, uh, permits for fireworks. Inspections of all fireworks booths will, uh, be performed during the June 28th through July 4th on a daily basis to ensure that, uh, the booths are not only, um, you know, fire safe, but to also hand out public education material to, uh, to all residents who, to visit those sites. Along with that, we also have extra engine company dedicated just to fireworks-related events in San Bruno. Uh, engine companies and chief officers will doing patrols of the high-activity neighborhoods on the 4th of July prior to dark. And then, uh, lastly, we'll, we will be collecting all the illegal fireworks that Jeff and his people collect and disposing of them properly through the sheriff's department. Uh, that's it for fire. I'll turn it over to Mr. Caldwell.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and City Council, for the police component, we will again conduct a zero-tolerance campaign to include the following. Prior to the 4th of July, there will be visits by personnel to habitual problem areas within the city to advise those residents there of our zero-tolerance policy, which can include a fine of up to $1,000. The department will conduct additional firework enforcement patrols in the days prior to and after the 4th of July holiday day. All department personnel will be required to work on the 4th, with the exception of of those on a regular scheduled vacation. Our regularly scheduled staff will be on hand to handle all non-firework-related calls. To supplement our remaining staff, San Bruno officers will partner with officers from neighboring agencies to conduct the enforcement patrol period. There will be approximately forty-five police officers patrolling the streets of San Bruno on the Fourth of July. These officers will conduct strict enforcement with those individuals who are caught using illegal fireworks. As directed by this council, both the police and fire departments pay particular attention to the Fourth of July. Each year, this collaboration has provided a clear and concise message to the public, that illegal fireworks are dangerous, and the violations of the use of illegal fireworks will not be tolerated. Those persons caught with illegal fireworks may be issued a fine of a thousand dollars or placed under arrest. In the last three years, officers have issued over forty citations with a thousand dollar fine. Over the past several years, our efforts have reduced the number of reports related to fireworks by over sixty-one percent. And over the past few years, it has been, there has been an apparent stabilization of reported fireworks violations. We will continue with this course of enforcement. The estimated cost for the proposed education and enforcement campaign is sixty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars. Estimated staffing car, staffing costs are as follows. The education campaign costs five thousand dollars, fire department costs sixteen thousand dollars, police department costs forty-five thousand two hundred, public works costs one thousand six hundred dollars. The recommendation before the council will once again allow the fire and police departments to initiate the education and enforcement campaign, as well as allow public works the additional resources needed for the cleanup of the tw- twenty-fourteen fireworks season. As with years past, the public is encouraged to call the police department and report firework violations or related problem areas within the city. Of course, this may be done anonymously. This concludes our report. The fire chief and I are available to answer any questions if you have them.
Good, any questions?
Through the chair.
Ken?
Could you state the, the, the phone number that you want, uh, anonymous calls or reports of fireworks to?
If it's, if it's an immediate, like a crime and, or something, it's an emergency, it's a nine-one-one call, otherwise, our, our main line number is eight-seven-seven, eighty-nine-hundred. Eight-nine-eight-nine is the emergency number, yes. And then six-one-six seventy-one zero-zero is another number.
Thank you.
Rico?
Considering the Fourth of July is on a Friday this year, uh, is this the same amount of monies that were allocated for, uh, last year as far as additional operations and enforcement campaign and the pub, uh, cleanup? Because as we well know, going into, uh, for most, a three-day weekend, people will stay out longer later and socialize more, celebrating America's independence. So, have we taken that in, to account, um, as far as the potential for, uh, additional need for resources?
Yes, we have. It's increased by about three thousand dollars approximately from last year, and it's increased for, uh, the costs of police, uh, additional staffing, as well as the cleanup costs, just as you described.
Thank you.
Anything else? Well, thank you, and good luck.
Thank you.
Item ten C, uh, we have three resolutions. Adopt resolutions authorizing the city manager to execute contracts for professional services for the Crestmore Neighborhood Reconstruction Project. The first one is a resolution approving a contract amendment with BKF Engineers, Inc. for civil engineering services for Phase Four of the Crestmore Reconstruction Project, and increasing the contract amount by three hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. The second is a resolution approving a contract with Mig, Inc., in an amount not to exceed eighty-four thousand six hundred dollars for landscape, architecture, and facilitation services for the Earl Glenview Park and Crestmore Canyon replanting. And the third one is a resolution approving a contract with Power System Design in an amount not to exceed sixty-eight thousand two hundred dollars to provide electrical engineering services for the new streetlight system within the Crestmore neighborhood. Harry?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, I'm Harry Burrows, and I'm the city's project manager for the Crestmore Reconstruction Project. Tonight, we have two items before you related to the Crestmore Neighborhood. I just wanna take a second and differentiate, um, the difference between item ten C that I'm about to speak about and item ten D, the next one. Um, the first item ten C involves projects that are within the Crestmore Neighborhood boundary, that's the, um, area highlighted in yellow on the map, um, behind me. Um, these are the projects that have previously been approved, um, by the City Council for design and construction. The second item ten D involves the additional projects that were not a part of the original reconstruction scope that the council directed staff to proceed with at the April twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen, um, City Council meeting. So, for this first item ten C, it's the consideration of three contracts to continue the neighborhood reconstruction, um, work. It should be noted that all three of the, um, firms, um, that were considering contracts for tonight, um, have previous experience and knowledge of the neighborhood, and, uh, they were selected, um, based upon that, um, as well as their ability to provide, um, economic and, um, costs, costly, um, economic and timely services. So the, the first of these items is a second amendment to the, um, current contract with BKF Eng-, BKF Engineers for Civil Engineering Services. Their original contract was for approximately three hundred thousand dollars, and that was for design work for the immediate fire damaged area. The first amendment, um, increased their contract to a total of about seven hundred and four thousand dollars, and it added the design of the replacement of the utilities in the remainder of the neighborhood. This amendment assumed that the remaining work would all be done as one construction contract. Since that time, in order to keep the construction progress going in the neighborhood and to minimize long-term disruption, it was determined to stagger the surface improvements, that's the street work, the, um, curb gutter, sidewalks, landscaping, and streetlights, in order to complete other portions of the work. Further complicating the design of the s- surface improvements is the fact that these new improvements must be designed to incorporate current ADA standards. We can't simply replace what's out there, um, because, um, they don't meet current ADA standards, the, the current sidewalks and driveway approaches. Phasing of the project also allows the sewer lateral program to be completed this fall before the surface improvements start next year. However, this does necessitate, necessitate an amendment to BKF's contract to complete and prepare a Phase Four Surface Improvement Bid Package that will meet these ADA standards. Also included as part of BKF's contract amendment is the civil design support for the expanded footprint of the Glenview Earl Park. This proposed amendment is for three hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred dollars, and will increase the total contract to them to one million and nineteen thousand dollars. The second contract before you is a contract with Mig to perform, perform landscape architecture and public facilitation support to city staff as part of the Glenview Earl Park Reconstruction. This contract is in the amount of eighty-four thousand six hundred dollars. Specifically, Mig will assist the city in holding community meetings, um, to help gather input, um, as to the city's, uh, and the public's vision, the community's vision of the park, perform constraints and opportunities analysis, prepare conceptual plans and renderings to help visualize the park concepts and plans, and refine these concepts to develop a final park schematic design that the city can then, um, take to construction. The second part of Mig's contract is to complete the design of the Upper Canyon replanting work and prepare bid documents for construction. This will allow us to, um, either bid that work separately and, and, um, construct those, um, do the replanting this fall, or to incorporate in one of the latter bid packages, um, as, as we deem fit. The third contract before you is a contract with, um, Power Systems Design, or PSD, for electrical engineering services to design the replacement streetlight system in the neighborhood. PSD previously performed the analysis of the utility undergrounding and performed preliminary streetlight analysis for the city. The new streetlights in the neighborhood will provide enhanced lighting that implements the city's new streetlight standards. Their proposed design will consist of LED lamps with decorative lamp posts spaced closer than the current tall Cobra headlights. The new lights will not only enhance safety, but also have a distinctive appearance unique to the neighborhood, and this is something that, uh, many of the residents have requested. The streetlight design will be incorporated into the Phase Four plans that BKF will be preparing, and the work will be done as part of that construction contract. The contract amount for B, for PSD for electrical engineering is sixty-eight thousand two hundred dollars. In addition to these contracts, the city recognizes the continuing disruption to the neighborhood and appreciates the public's continued patience and understanding of the ongoing construction. The, um, as outlined in the staff report, we're undertaking a temporary paving project at the completion of the Phase Three work that's currently occurring now. Um, this work will, um, provide a new, thin, but smoother driving surface throughout the entire neighborhood, um, until the final phase of street reconstruction is undertaken as Phase Four next spring. In the interim, the Upper Sewer Lateral Placement Pro- Project, um, will occur late this summer and fall, with the reconstruction of the homes on the ten vacant lots occurring hopefully within this same timeframe as well, this fall into, into next spring. Staff is recommending, uh, approval of all three of these contracts before you tonight, and, and just to note that si- since each contract is a separate resolution, we ask that the council take an action on each separately. Thanks.
Any questions, uh, for staff at this time? Or action by the council?
I'll introduce a resolution approving a contract amendment.
Sorry. I'll introduce a resolution approving a contract amendment with BKF Engineers.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Okay, and then I'll introduce the resolution approving a contract with MIG in comp- in company, Incorporated.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
And lastly, the res-, uh, introduce a resolution approving a contract with Power Systems Designs in an amount not to exceed sixty-eight thousand two hundred dollars.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item ten D, we have three more resolutions. Adopt resolutions authorizing the city manager to execute contracts for professional services for additional projects in the Crestmore area. The first one is a resolution approving a contract with Mig, Inc., for a not-to-exceed amount of forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars for planning and biological assessment services for Crestmore Canyon. The second is a resolution approving a contract with Langdon Treadwell Rollo for a not-to-exceed amount of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for geotechnical investigations and engineering for the Crestmore Canyon Slope Repairs and Fire Station Number Fifty-two Reconstruction. And the third is a resolution approving a contract with Willsey and Hamm for a not-to-exceed amount of fifty-six thousand eight hundred dollars to provide expanded base mapping and topographic surveying within Crestmore Canyon.
Okay. So this item is, uh, the consideration of contracts for three firms to provide services as part of the additional Crestmore area projects. These projects include the Crestmore Canyon Slope Repair and Erosion Control Project. That's shown, um, um, within the canyon area on this exhibit, the, um, little pink, I guess, if they're pink to you, little pink clouds, um, they're schematic, that's not the actual locations, but, uh, they're meant to represent, uh, locations of slope repairs in the canyon. Also, the Crestmore Canyon Fire Safety Improvements and Trail System, uh, Fire Station Number Fifty-two Replacement, including the Crestmore Neighborhood Center. Other projects, um, that were approved on April twenty-second that are not a part of this item, um, action tonight, but I'll, I'll just mention here quickly, include the Sneethe Plymouth Corridor Tree Replacement Project, the traffic signal preemption for emergency vehicles, um, on Sneethe Lane and San Bruno Avenue, as well as a maintenance fund for the neighborhood landscaping. So the purpose of the work included in the contracts, um, these three contracts is to gather additional data to help refine the projects, both in terms of scope and cost. Again, as with the previous item, these firms all have experience working in the Crestmore Neighborhood, and were, and were selected based upon their knowledge and ability to economically perform the work in a timely fashion. The first contract is with Mig for planning and biological assessment within Crestmore Canyon. This work involves a determination of biological constraints such as sensitive plants and, um, animals within the canyon that may affect the proposed fire safety and trail improvements. Mig will also perform routing studies for the proposed trail in conjunction with the work to be undertaken by the geotechnical engineer. The contract amount with Mig is forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. The second contract is with the firm of Langdon Treadwell Rollo, and that's for a hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for geotechnical engineering services. This contract will expand upon some of the previous, previously performed work within the canyon to help identify the location, severity, and continuing potential of erosion and landscape issues within the canyon. This work will also complement the previously described work of Mig to help determine the best routing for a proper, uh, for a proposed trail system. The second stage of the Treadwell Rollo scope of work will be to provide the actual detailed design and remedial actions to perform the required slope repairs. I just wanted to point out that Treadwell and Rollo's scope does not include recommendations for the Glenview Earl Park, those recommendations have been previously provided as another phase of the work. Then the third contract, um, under this item is for surveying services for the firm of Willsey and Hamm. Willsey and Hamm will perform topographic surveying that will provide both Mig and Treadwell Rollo with information they need to complete their work. The city has some previous topographical information available for the canyon, but due to the heavy vegetation and the continued erosion over the years, in some areas, this information is in need of supplementation. So Willsey and Hamm's final product will be a topographical base map of the entire canyon for the use, um, in design and analysis. The proposed contract for this work is fifty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. Again, staff recommends approval of all three of these contracts, and, um, as each one is a separate resolution, they require separate action as well.
Thank you. Questions or, uh, action?
Through the chair, Harry, could you elaborate more on what, the, on, on the, the fee, the fee structure of, uh, Treadwell, Rollo, Langdon? Hundred and seventy thousand dollars sounds, you know, it, it's a lot of money, and I understand, I mean, the component of actually designing some, you know, uh, some, some design, having some design work, whatever, you know, probably explains it, but, uh, I mean, I, I, also, I anticipate that there's pretty extensive, uh, study, geotechnical study for the, uh, at the fire station site?
Yeah, at the, at the fire station site, um, there is, um, some trenching that'll need to occur, um, because of the proximity to the San Andreas Fault, so there'll be some trace fault trenching that will need to occur, um, trenching with bi- geologists out there to, to map, um, the presence of any faults that are there. The, the largest portion of the contract, um, involves the canyon work, and, and there's two stages of that work. The first stage is the preliminary investigation work, um, review of some of the, um, previous geotechn- technical work that has been done, walking the canyon, um, um, looking at the problem areas. The, the previous geotechnical report that was done identified, I believe it was, nine, um, areas, um, requiring remediation. The, um, bulk of the budget for, for their work involves actually getting into the canyon with drill rigs and performing boreings, and then, um, coming up with the actual design. Given the topography and some of the unknowns at this point, um, in time, um, that's, that, that's why that fee is a little bit heavier than you, you might consider normally.
I, I figured as much. Could you, are you, are you capable of, of ans-, uh, addressing the issue as far as a fire station being located or rebuilt, s- in close proximity to a, to a fault line? Or to a, you know, to trace lines? Is there a chance that it is not feasible? Uh, or, or do we, I mean, are we, are we supposed to reach that point at, you know, or is it a done deal that we, yes, we can, you know, relook, uh, rebuild the fire station in that site with certain engineering measures?
I, I don't believe at this point in time, we have a hundred percent certainty that we can rebuild the fire station at that location, given the proximity of the San Andreas Fault. However, that's why we're undertaking this, this work by Treadwell Rollo. The presence of, or lack of presence of any, um, trace faults in that area will determine, um, what certainty, what we can do there.
Thank you.
Any questions, Harry?
I just have one question. Harry, do we have a timeline for when these things might be finished?
Um, each, each project has a, a separate timeline, um, we're prepared to, um, proceed with, um, getting these consultants going immediately upon your authorization. The, um, the work, um, for example, at the fire station can occur very shortly, um, the work within the canyon has a little bit longer timeframe, it'll, it'll begin immediately, but it has a longer duration, um, in, in terms of, um, um, get, getting that work completed.
Okay, but, three months, six months?
I certainly think within three months, we'll have a good picture of at least the preliminary information on the fire station, um, um, that's specifically, when I say information, just related to these contracts.
Right.
Probably, probably looking at the six-month timeframe, six to nine months for the canyon work.
Okay.
Especially, um, if we have to get drill rigs in there, when we get drill rigs in there, because that involves a lot of, um, um, es- essentially- because that involves a lot of, essentially preliminary construction work. And that's going to be dependent upon what MIG finds out in terms of some of the sensitive plants and/or animals that may be present in the canyon.
Okay, and I assume you're keeping the neighborhood apprised of what's going to happen and when the big rigs are going to come through and all those kinds of things?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Just a comment on that. Most of this work for these additional projects obviously is occurring outside of the neighborhood, and for example, a lot of the access to the canyon will not be required to be through the neighborhood. We can enter through Engvall and through the existing service road that is within a bulk of the canyon right now.
Yes, but if I lived on the outer rim of those, I want to know what was going on.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
To the chair, real quick, I was just going to echo what I, Councilmember O'Connell's, yes, please let's let them know.
Yes.
In advance.
Any comments or action?
Through the chair, I'll take over, I'll take over here and introduce.
Councilmember...
Introduce approving a contract with MIG.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
To introduce the resolution to approve contract with Langen Treadwell Rollo.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Now introduce a resolution approving contract with Willsey &amp; Hamm.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Item 10E, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Lorick Associates Consulting for a wastewater division organization study in an amount not to exceed fifty-six thousand dollars.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of council. The resolution before you tonight would authorize a contract with Lorick Associates to conduct a wastewater division operational study. As you know, many changes and program adjustments were made in the wastewater operations in response to improve the efficiency of our sewer system and reduce the number of SOs we were experiencing. The Public Works Department has implemented several programs, updated practices, and improved training, and has been complimented for our efforts by the Regional Baykeeper Board. This study will address the impacts, explore opportunities, and develop alternatives related to the unusual acceleration of the many maintenance programs and requirements which were anticipated and included in work plans associated with our wastewater operations. Specifically, this work will evaluate the structure, practices, resources, staff, and skill sets needed to meet ongoing operational goals and requirements. In addition, this review will compare current city sewer operations with industry best practice standards to look for additional efficiencies. The study is estimated to be completed by December thirty-first, two thousand fourteen. Information was discussed and reviewed at the Infrastructure Subcommittee meeting in early May this month, and consensus was given at that time to proceed to City Council for your consideration tonight. Staff developed an RFP for this work, which was advertised in two thousand and ten, late two thousand and ten. Four qualified firms responded at that time. After selection process, Lorick Associates Consulting was selected as the most qualified to conduct this assessment. This operational study was delayed due to internal staffing but is now ready for full development and implementation. Lorick Associates Consulting has worked with the wastewater division on a variety of projects such as our computerized maintenance management systems. They've also done a garage operational study recently, and they're very familiar with the city sewer operations. We will return to the council at a later date with the results of the study and present further recommendations at that time, and we're available for any questions you might have.
Through the chair.
Question, where you go?
So my understanding of this will be to review, find efficiencies, find ways to streamline it, maybe update all the processes of what goes on?
Correct.
You just said it better. It does say here the department will come back to the city council early two thousand and fifteen, and your staff report you said sometime in two fifteen. Not asking for an exact date, but do we know if it's prior to June of two thousand and fifteen? Do we know?
We anticipate early spring. We think it's going to take about six months. There's quite a bit of data that they have to gather and analyze and go out and do some benchmarking and analysis, so we're hoping by early spring we'll be ready to come back to the council.
And I was thinking that because obviously before the next budget cycle, it would be good to have that information prior to the budget being reviewed in or recommended to the council.
That's our intent.
Good intent.
Yeah.
Anything else, action on this item?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
And 10F, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the Railroad Construction and Maintenance Agreement for the San Bruno Great Separation Project between the Peninsula Corridor Joint Powers Board and the City of San Bruno for the First Avenue Sanitary Sewer Line Project in the amount of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars with one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar contingency and authorizing six hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars additional appropriation to the pipeline repair project from the Wastewater Enterprise Fund.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, good evening. Recently, all of us celebrated the opening of the new station and the end of construction of the Great Separation Project. Remaining to, from the construction, two big items remaining to be finalized, the construction of the arch and all of the work on the First Avenue, besides some other minor traffic improvements around the project. As part of this project, all of the utilities impacted by the project itself were included in the scope of the project to be replaced or upsized as part of this project. The sewer on the First Avenue was not included in the scope of the Great Separation Project. The sewer system and the water system in this neighborhood was built around the forties, and they are in a, the sewer system itself experienced SOs and also required very high level of maintenance due to undersized, undersized and also lack of slope of that whole system in that area. To address those deficiencies in our sewer system master plan was recommended to replace the sewer system in this neighborhood and was recommended to replace as one of the priority, and is included in our approved CIP to be replaced in the first five years. If I recall properly, in our CIP was included replacement of the sewer in this area for fourteen point eight million dollars. The water in this neighborhood already was replaced earlier in the nineties. The sewer wasn't replaced at that time. Due to many changes to First Avenue as part of this project and also the ongoing construction activity during the more than four years, the road is in pretty bad shape and need to be repaved as part of the project itself. Reason why this concern was raised about paving the road and leaving the old replaced sewer under the new pavement, which would require then later replacing it, damaging the newly paved road and also inconveniencing the residents again for a second time. Reason why city negotiated with JPP, JPB and JPB negotiated with their contractor, general contractor, Granite, to include this project is in their construction project area, to include in their contract as a change order, and they were able successfully negotiate this with their general contractor and also with their subcontractor who is JBM, JMB.
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 Happens to me all the time.
JMB, JMB. Who is a experienced utility contractor here in the city. They performed many other utility projects for us. Right now, they are basically working in the whole, in the Glenview neighborhood, replacing all of the utilities in the Glenview neighborhood, and they were the subcontractor for the whole Great Separation Project, and they are, the city always was pleased with the quality of their work. Reason why is our recommendation for you to support the inclusion of this work in, to modify our construction and maintenance agreement with JPB and to include the cost of the replacement of this section of sewer in their contract as a change order. This, the total cost of the project is around one million twenty-eight dollars. This would require a additional appropriation from the Sewer Enterprise Fund of six hundred fifty-four thousand dollars. This work was included in our rate study and is supported by and foreseen as part of our rate requirement for the sewer system. Wing collaborated and coordinated the design for this section, and either of us are available for any question you might have.
Any questions, Ken?
I'm questioning, you're doing it almost in three sections?
Correct.
First section, you say you're doing it in pipe bursts, and then it looks, it appears that in the, from Pine to Angus and then from, and then the work at Angus Avenue is not, is not, it's open trench or not pipe burst. Can you explain why? It just seems like a straight shot.
The main reason, but I will let Wing to comment on that too, that it's our intent also to change the direction of the flow in this area for the increased slope on the sewer, and that's the main reason, but I will let Wing to elaborate on it.
And council, Clara mentioned earlier that the sewer main on First Avenue was undersized, and the section that is between Pine and Angus, its five-inch diameter was already an odd size. They don't, no longer manufacture a five-inch sewer, and this is pretty much, they make it very difficult for maintenance purpose, and the sewer main, the existing main is pretty much flat, no slope, and with such a small diameter, the flow is very difficult to go through. So what we intend to do is the current section sewer main flows from south to north to tie into the connection at Pine, and what you intend to do is to reverse the flow of this section of sewer main to go from north to south and tie into the manhole at Angus, which is a lot deeper. We will have, you know, close to five feet of fall, and that's the reason that that section of sewer main must be open trench and not pipe burst. Thank you.
I knew it'd be that simple. Thank you.
Anything else, Irene?
Thank you, I have a comment. My grandparents and my mother moved into a house on Second Avenue, which is just one block behind, one block east of where you are talking about, in nineteen thirty-nine. So some of that sewer work was in place at that time, and when, we have stories from when my grandfather was there, that he would fight City Hall because there was sewer backups then. So this is a long time coming to fix, seventy-five years. My family's been involved with this all that time, and I'm really, really happy. If there's no other comments, I'd like to introduce the resolution to go forward with this. I, I've been trying all these years, but at least we're getting it done now.
And they're looking down on you, thanking you. Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Item eleven, report of commissions, boards, and committees, there aren't any this evening. Twelve comments from councilmembers? Irene?
I have one. I'm very excited about the response people have had for the Centennial Tree, and I thank Robert Rekel for, sorry, I always do that to you, for putting the information in the patch, and also if you want to get a tree, the information is on the homepage of San Bruno, City of San Bruno, it should be pretty easy to find, and we're looking forward to actually planting one hundred trees this year. Thank you.
Great. Anything else?
Through the chair, I neglected to announce it last meeting, but just want to let everyone know that we did have the great success of Relay for Life, for sure, and it was on April twenty-sixth. Last check-in, we have exceeded the eighty thousand dollar mark, which exceeds our goal of sixty thousand for this year, so things are great, and just let everyone know that we are taking donations up till August first for this year, so keep them coming in, and then we'll take a little rest and start planning for next year. Thank you to the entire community.
Great. Item thirteen, closed session, there is no closed session this evening. Item fourteen, adjournment, the next regular city council meeting will be held right here June tenth at the Senior Center, seven P.M. Meeting adjourned.